I think she has. She has texted him to see about connecting.
So we're waiting for Supervisor Chukri.
Deb, have you been able to contact Supervisor Chukri?
I contacted Paige and she is aware that we are.
Supervisor Gallardo is here ahead of Supervisor Chukri.
Scott, I'm going to mute your microphone or your camera also until.
No, no, we will leave the room there.
Microphone is still not quite there yet.
Good morning, Steve. Okay, I think we are ready to start the meeting.
Deb, can you start it? I don't have the.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good morning and welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. Before we get started, I want to let everyone know that Chairman Hickman had an out-of-town engagement, so I will humbly try to fill his shoes for this morning's meeting. Today's invocation and pledge will be led by Franciscia Montoya at the invitation of District 5 Supervisor Steve Gallardo. Steve, would you please introduce our guest?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quickly, I'll go ahead and introduce Franciscia Montoya, longtime friend, and at the conclusion of our invocation and pledge, I'd just like to make a few brief comments about my dear friend, so.
Are you on the phone, Franciscia?
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. May we bow our heads. Heavenly Father, as we come before you this morning, let us give thanks for this beautiful day and for the many and abundant blessings bestowed upon us. Thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to gather once again. This morning, we ask that you please guide the leadership of the Board of Supervisors. Allow them to lead with humility, with courage, and with strength as they go about the business of discussing and making important decisions that are in the best interest of our community. As public servants, Heavenly Father, please allow them to receive your wisdom, to listen, to seek understanding, to discern, and the ability to work together. May each member act and lead in accord with the will of his faith and with your blessing and your grace, dear Lord. May our leaders have a fruitful and productive meeting. And lastly, Heavenly Father, may we always pray and give thanks to our leaders for their steadfast belief and willingness to be of service for the common good of our community. In this, in Jesus' precious name, we pray, amen.
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 And now, for the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, real briefly, Franciscia, thank you so much for joining us this morning. Mr. Chairman members, Franciscia is a longtime friend, and when I called to invite her to come do this, we try to like think back when we first, you know, got acquaintance, you know, when I first meet Franciscia, and we're talking like 30 years now. It was back on my, when I worked in elections. She was the Chief of Staff for then Councilman Salomon Leha back in like very long time ago. But Franciscia's just been a true trooper in the community. She serves as my appointee on the planning and zoning. She also serves on Fowler Elementary School. I worked with her most, I remember working with her a lot when she was with Stardust, which was an organization to help low-income families get into housing. This is back in the late 90s perhaps, but Franciscia has just been a treasure. She has decided to even step in the ring and run for Phoenix City Council, so good luck on that. We know how difficult that sometimes is, but she is just a trooper and a blessing to have in District 5. You can always count on her as a volunteer. Anytime our office would have some type of public gathering or a public event, she was always one of the first to volunteer. We haven't done much. I think the last time I saw her was at the Levine BBQ back in March before COVID hit, but just, she's just an awesome person to know, and I just really value her friendship. And Franciscia, thank you so much for serving on our planning and zoning and everything you do in regards to the community, and I just wish you the best of luck in the future. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Fran, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Supervisor Chukri.
Here.
I understand that the chairman is out of town, and Chairman Sellers.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will do the Pet Showcase by Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. So did you know that Maricopa County Animal Care and Control has a foster dog and cat program where we currently have 73 animals fostered with 41 families? Oakley, the dog in the picture here, is a great example of this program. Adventure always seems to be calling Oakley's name, and it's time for a forever home to help him answer. This handsome six-year-old is always ready to jump in the car and go for a ride, loves playing in water and being hosed off, and enjoys going out for walks and runs when the weather is nice. He has been very well behaved in his foster home, uses the doggy door, and is house-trained. He hasn't chewed anything. He shouldn't, and is very gentle accepting snacks. He has quite the reputation as a professional-level snuggler and is willing to cuddle for as long as you want to. Oakley seems to be selective about which dogs he likes, so please arrange for your dogs to meet him before adopting so you can make sure they're compatible. He enjoys chasing wild bunnies, so he would do best in a home with no small animals and wouldn't mind being your only pet and keeping all the snuggles to himself. Oakley is neutered, microchipped, and has current vaccinations. His detailed medical notes can be found at apps.mcdot.mericopa.gov/adoptablepets. So after the Pet Showcase, Clerk, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
I have none this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So we have two items on our agenda today that will have presentations, and we're going to take these items out of order. The first item is regarding elections. The presentation will be led by our Elections Director, Scott Jarrett, and Ray Valenzuela.
Mr. Chairman, I believe they are online. Scott, would you like to start?
Scott?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and as, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And as I found out, being in elections, we always have to be ready to have redundant processes in place. And this morning, when I was attempting to connect to the go-to meeting for this board presentation, my computer wasn't working, but fortunately, I was able to come over and join Mr. Valenzuela in his office to be able to provide this presentation. So we are both going to tag team this presentation from this office. So always good to be flexible as we move forward with these upcoming elections. So I really appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as we present the upcoming, are the Election Day and Emergency Voting Plan for your consideration and approval for the upcoming November general election. And as Mr. Valenzuela presents some of the highlights from the early voting plan and what voters need to know from the early voting plan that the recorder approved earlier this week. So we thank you for your time, and we'll go ahead and discuss some of our plans and considerations. So one thing that we do is when we're planning for any election is we reflect on the knowledge, the experiences, the insights from our staff, but we don't always just keep that to our internal processes. We often reflect on and take knowledge gained and experience that other jurisdictions across the county. If we can go back to the prior slide, please. We reflect on experiences from other jurisdictions across the county. And one thing that's been resonating with me over the last several weeks as I've seen other election directors speak, conduct interviews with the media, read articles, is that there are several jurisdictions across this nation that have not conducted an election in the era or during the COVID-19 pandemic. Well, that is not the case in Maricopa County. So we have had four elections since the COVID-19 pandemic started. And as challenging as that COVID-19 has been for us as we've gone forward and conducted these elections, it's provided us a lot of lessons learned and a lot of opportunities for us to refine our processes so we can prepare for the upcoming November general election. And both Mr. Valenzuela and I are confident to say that we are prepared for this upcoming November general election, and the Election Department is prepared to be able to serve Maricopa County for voters. But just because we're confident to be able to serve Maricopa County voters in the upcoming November general election doesn't mean there aren't challenges that we have to overcome and that this is going to be easy. We are still facing many of the same challenges and headwinds that we've been facing since March and through the summer into the August primary elections. Those challenges are being able to find sufficient voting locations, being able to recruit poll workers and keep poll workers safe as they're working within our voting locations, being able to keep voters safe as they choose how to participate in this election. But because we've had those experiences and we've been able to refine those processes, we're confident that we will be able to provide voters with a safe, reliable, and secure election and a historically accessible election as well. And we'll, as we go through the slides, we'll be discussing and describing how we're able to provide those voters with those options. But there's other items that we consider as we move forward with this election. That is really being able to collaborate with the community itself. Sometimes we forget, in Maricopa County, we have over 4 million people living here in Maricopa County, over 2.5 million registered voters, or nearly 2.5 million registered voters. So as, that's the second-largest voting jurisdiction in the country. We're also larger than seven states. So sometimes we forget that we really are still, though, one community coming together. We'll be able to highlight and talk about some of the areas that our community and some of our partners throughout the community have done to help us in being able to prepare for this upcoming election. Then lastly, we'll talk about our communication strategies and how we're informing voters on how they can participate and successfully participate in this election. So if we can go to the next slide. So anytime that we start preparing for election and we start developing our plans, we first need to identify, well, how many voters potentially will be participating in this election, especially as it comes to Election Day. Now, the purpose of our forecast and trying to attempt to determine what turnout would look like is really based for our planning considerations. It's not to be exactly precise to say to the exact number of how many voters will participate. It's for us to identify how many resources we need to be able to support this election. So there are several different items that we consider, and some of those are early voting trends and in-person voting trends. And over the last several cycles leading up into this November general election, voters have been selecting to vote early, much more frequently. So out of the last few election cycles, that range has been anywhere from 85% to 95% of voters that have actually cast a ballot have done that either early through the mail or early voting at one of the early voting locations. So that is a major development that does impact how we need to prepare for this election, whether that is staffing our central boards, make sure that we have enough staff to be able to process those early ballots, be able to tabulate those early ballots in our Central Count Tabulation Center, but then also to be able to staff our polling locations and our vote centers. But that's setting the baseline, the overarching framework for maybe how many people are going to participate in this election. But we also need to identify where in-person voting locations should be located. And we use a variety of different data inputs to drive those decisions. And those include point density, in-person heat maps, identifying where, based on historical patterns, those in-person voters do tend to vote, where those in-person voters live. So those drive a lot of our decision-makings. And I've shown those types of maps and presentations in the past to the board, and a lot of those do show where a lot of people live. So they'd be in that Central Phoenix corridor and that Central Mesa corridor. But just making sure that we have voting locations in there is not sufficient. We need to make sure that we're also serving our rural communities, our Native American communities, and making sure that voting locations are dispersed across the county to serve all voters. So we do a variety of data analysis to make sure that we have a voting location in the right location as well as that we have enough check-in stations to be able to serve the potential turnout for that location. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So given that analysis, we've gone through and attempted to identify what participation would look like in this election so we could have sufficient resources. And elections are infrequent, and a lot of the factors that drive what turnout would, what actual turnout would be are based off election-specific items, interest, what is on the ballot. So it is hard to project, and there's not a lot of data elements or data points that you can truly get a refined turnout forecast. So we do a variety of things to overcome. First is we use three different forecast models to try to get a range of what potential voters and what turnout would look like. Those forecasts relied on data points such as prior elections, similar elections. So in this case, 2008, 2012, 2016, in-person voting and early voting patterns. We also then apply factors such as voter registration increases as well as permanent early voter signup increases, those types of things to identify what that forecast range should be. But we also use other factors such as comparing August to November turnout. Because those first three models really rely on historical data, they haven't included anything that would relate to COVID-19 and how COVID-19 may impact the selection. So taking a different analysis and comparing that August to November increases does allow us to do that. And so what we're finding with all of our different turnout models is that the range of voters is going to be somewhere between in-person voters, 200,000 and 300,000 voters on Election Day. And that would be approximately 2 million total voters. So with that, that would leave anywhere from 1.7 million to 1.8 million voters voting early in this election. Now, that doesn't consider any of the strategies that we'll discuss as we move through this presentation that may provide voters opportunities to vote early, whether that be by mail or in-person. But there is one other analysis that we do, and we do look at the percent of non-pebble voters that are registered, and they're not on the pebble. Right now, that's projecting to be right around 550,000 of those as we get closer to Election Day and the registration deadline. And historically, if you look at the 2008, the 2012, and the 2016 elections, anywhere from 38% to 40%, 46% of those will vote in-person on Election Day. So if you take that analysis of about 45%, you know, conservative estimate, and you also look at 550,000 voters that aren't registered on the pebble, that would give you, again, another data point that shows right around 247,000 to 250,000 voters would be likely to turn out in this election on Election Day.
Mr. Chair.
So with that, go ahead.
Jim, Supervisor Gates.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, just a question about this. So I'm in particular interested because of the dynamics we have in this election with some people having concerns about early ballots getting through the mail, that we may have an increase in people who bring their early ballot to the polling place on Election Day. So when you have those numbers there, where do the people who, they're voting an early ballot, but they're participating on Election Day by dropping it off at the polling place, where do those people fit? Which side of the ledger?
So Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, and we'll talk a little bit more about our different strategies to best serve those voters, those voters that may be concerned with the post office. But right now, we're forecasting anywhere that there could be between 300,000 and 400,000 potential of those voters that turn their early ballot very late in the process. And that could be either that weekend before during emergency voting or on Election Day itself. Now, it's important to know that those voters do not have to stand in line. If they do show up at a voting location, then they can just skip the line, take it to a drop box, a secure ballot drop box in the voting location. However, we would encourage those voters to take advantage of all the early voting locations that we will be providing in this election as an opportunity to drop off their ballot at those, plus many of the standalone drop box locations or precursor to something we'll be discussing shortly, but we'll be introducing drive-through contactless drop boxes as well that will be open in the early voting period as well as on Election Day. So those are all strategies we're deploying to offer voters options to be able to turn in their early ballot back to us and not necessarily have to go to a in-person vote center.
So, Mr. Chair, so the 200,000 to 300,000 Election Day voters includes the people who are going to show up on Election Day and drop off their early ballot?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, no, it does not include.
Okay.
Those would be potential just voters only. The early, the ones that would drop it off would be in addition to them.
And what are you estimating that number to be at this point, given the unique nature of this election?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, right now, our forecast is calling for the number of potential, what we call those early lates, but they are early ballots that have arrived on time just very late in the process, be somewhere between 300,000 and 400,000. And we're not projecting that just to be for Election Day, but over those last few days of the election cycle leading up to Election Day, in addition to those that come in the mail at that point in time. Somewhere around that number, 300,000, 400,000.
Sorry about that, Mr. Jarrett. And are you going to be talking about that more later in the presentation? Or should I ask my question about that now?
Supervisor Gates, yes, we'll be talking more about the strategies to serve those voters and also how that could impact reporting of results and tabulation as well.
Okay, all right, then I'll save those questions for later. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any, Mr. Chair and members of the board, any further questions before I turn it over to Mr. Valenzuela to discuss some voter registration and information related to the early voting plan before he turns it back to me to discuss in-person voting options and Election Day?
I see no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I appreciate you putting up with our technology challenge. And again, I concur with Mr. Jarrett that this was our first test for this election of our flexibility. But I do want to take just some point of privilege to thank the board. Again, I've been in this department for decades, and I can feel it. But I, this is probably the most cooperation, the most effectiveness we've had in as far as a relationship to make sure we're serving the voters. So with that said, I'm going to move on to the next slide. So with that said, I'm going to move on to the next slide, please, and speak to voter registration. As you can see on this slide, we are seeing some historic registration totals we've climbed. This slide actually is, registration is fluid, everybody knows that, but this slide even is outdated and it was just done a day or so ago. So we're actually at 2,459,000, or I'm sorry, we're actually at 242,476,754, although this one shows a where we're at just a couple of days ago. But when we presented on August 31st, we have seen an increase of 17,000 voters just from a couple of days ago. In addition to, you'll see here, the chart shows the from a year past, a year back since August, or actually since a couple of years, August 2018 all the way to now, you'll see the increase is quite substantial, almost 313,000 or 15% increase seen from 2016 till now. The big thing that as far as voter registration or pebble or pebble, as you will, we are seeing a large growth. As we indicate here, we have 1.92 million of our 2.47 million. Actually, we're only 300 voters away from actually reaching 1.93 million. So it's literally growing leaps and bounds. We're seeing approximately 1,500 to 2,000 a day, people joining up. So that's a good thing, meaning our messaging is working. Our messaging, they're telling people to use a ballot by mail, not so much vote by mail, that you have to return it by mail, but get the ballot preemptively and then choose your options, which we'll cover as we go further down. But I just wanted to mention the increase in registration and the increase in the permanent early voting list. Next slide. So, early voting, again, is one of the options on top of the safe and secure in-person voting, whether it's early or on Election Day. But I wanted to kind of address some of the side folklore that talks to early voting, the question about our post office. I had mentioned in previous meetings that we did check with the post office. Nothing has changed in our sort facility in Arizona or the Phoenix main. So we do have the same throughput that we would and have been experienced for years. So that's a good thing. Whether that was planned to be or not, it is, nothing has been touched in that facility. So that means status quo. Voters that have experienced a pretty rapid return rate, we should still experience that despite the other issues with certain other states. But what we want to know and what put out there for voters is, when we speak to safe, secure, and transparent elections, the key part of that transparent part is having the voters have that ability to track their ballot. So I just want to reemphasize the to the group and to advocacy groups and those listening that we really encourage people to help us with that transparency part and check your ballot. This will help you if you're concerned that your ballot has been, you did use the post office as an example, how do we know we got it? So if that text, join 628-683 for the public to know that will get them their status on top of when we mail it, all the way to us counting it, and you'll get that text message or email. The other thing to point out is the request date and the mail back date. So we'll have a calendar that we will be putting that out, but the last day to request a ballot is Friday, October 23rd. And the post office is recommending, which we're also pushing, that the voter return their ballot no later than seven days. I do want to dispel a little bit of, Maricopa County uses business reply first-class mail. There's no need to put a stamp on your ballot. It is already the fastest it can come as far as first-class mail. But we do still ask that you mail that back within seven days prior, and that date falls on October 27th. So request by October 23rd, mail back by October 27th, last day to request 23rd. Then, of course, co-director Jarrett will talk a little bit about drop boxes when we talk about all of the locations in a little bit more detail. But we are excited, and not to steal some of his thunder, but some of that drive-through drop-off contact list is is going to be one of the things that is going to allow voters to not even have to get in that line, which they, again, do not have to wait in line if they're just dropping off, but that's one of our, what we want the voters to know, and we'll cover those sites, or co-director Jarrett will. Excitingly, there's a lot of new partners, and that will be covered. The other key things is that what we've done to increase access is we did recently send an additional mailer to non-pebble voters. We had 600,000-plus voters. We've dropped that down to 550 people that are not on pebble, that either way, we've got this mailer that informs them how to sign up or how to go vote in person in addition to that. We also have made our website, which we've been promoting quite a bit, that allows for a voter to go to request.mericopa.vote or solicitude.mericopa.voto. And in English and Spanish, either way, they can make a one-time request. If they're saying, I don't want to join people, but in the light of COVID, I would like to have the option of ballot by mail, go to request.america.vote, one-time request, or new to the process just this year is online permanent early voting list signup. It has a digital capacity to actually verify your registration and allow you to sign up to the permanent early voting list. And I think that's where we're seeing voters take advantage of what I'm going to call ballot by mail rather than vote by mail, because there is options that allow you to return that without having to use the mail system, i.e. the drop-off, or going in person and voting anytime during that 27-day period to if you if you prefer that option. Last but not least on the early voting is we are doing robocall outreach, just minimal, not invasive, but a one-time message that says closer to the time when it's time to return. Voters, remember this is the day that we want you to mail it back, and if you have not, drop it off. So that's another method for us to increase access.
Hey, Ray, this is Jack.
Yeah.
Quick question. How do you, how did you determine who to send the mailers to on the permanent early voter, who are not permanent early voters? And the reason I'm asking that, the reason I'm asking that question is, I've had a couple of people talk to me and say that they've heard from people who were not registered voters who got that mailing.
Chairman, members of the board, it was went to only valid registered voters that are on the system. So there, it was not just a, it was literally taking the registration rolls, and everybody that is not on pebble currently was sent that mailer. So it is now, again, we, it's, so it was not just a random mailing to households, it was specific to voters on the registration rolls.
Okay, well, that's certainly what I thought, but I just wanted to confirm that with you. Thank you.
And Chairman and members of the board, I do want to point out that since you brought this up, there is mailers out there, the vote committee, and there's several different BCI third-party organizations that have sent out registration forms to households. I got one myself that says somebody in this household is, may not be registered, and it's not correct. So I know it was an effort to try to get people to register, but we're getting a lot of calls that people are saying, you sent me this, does this mean I'm not registered? I just want to point out that there, if it is not from Maricopa County or Maricopa County Elections Department, it is a third party, and it has to be identified, and you'll see that. And likely, it's just, again, they did a global household mailing. So a lot of mailings that go out there are not necessarily from us. So I just want to point that out. But if it is, say, official election mail, and it has our return address, Maricopa County Elections, it is from us, and it is using vetted registration data.
Thank you.
So, next slide. So this here, and again, this is one of the things that we talked about, secure, safe, transparent. The transparent part is having the voter participate and check their ballot, track their ballot, and give them that peace of mind that we did get it. That's one of the key things, especially if they use a mail, or even if they drop it off, just with the minute we get it received, picked up on the post office ourselves or from the drop box, it scanned in to say it's received, and if you're on that ballot status, you can automatically, or sign up to that, you could automatically get that text message or email that says we got it. We're the Amazon of voting, if you will. Everybody's familiar with that kind of notification. We want to be able to be able to give you that transparency. But the other part is the security part. These are the four or five points of why it's secure, and it almost segues back from your question, Chairman, that we only use verified registered voter data. So only a registered voter can get a ballot. You have to have been vetted. You had to have been gone, submit your registration. We run that up through the various different agencies. It comes back to say you are a citizen. It comes back to say the address is valid. We do an NCOA, National Change of Address, to verify the address of the voter all before the ballot is sent and ahead of, that's when you register. But on top of that, we even do one more ahead of a ballot being sent. Ninety days out, we sent a mailer that says expect your ballot on this day, October 7th, as an example. And we, that is also sent to test address. It's returned service requested. It requires the post office say that John Doe is not at that address any longer, and we hold them out from giving them a live ballot and instead send them a voter registration letter to say, post office says you moved from Glendale to Tempe. So we want voters to know to expect that. If they've moved, go come check your status. Go to beballerety.vote, and we're going to emphasize that throughout this presentation because that's a personalized dashboard for a voter. It gives you specifically your information, your address that we have on file, your mailing address. That's another important thing, is if you have an old P O. box, know your ballot's going to go there. You'll see that, oh, shoot, I have that. Also gives you your party, gives you your your pebble status, all of that on that personalized dashboard, beballerety.vote. But again, back to this, number one, you can't get a ballot unless you're vetted registered voter. We do the 90-day notice, number two. Number three is you, we track your ballot. We actually, again, incorporate the best practices of real-world environment. We actually track your ballot all the way to your your mailbox. And again, now you can track it on the way back using that join 62, texting join 628-683. Last but not least is number four, 100% signature verification. Folks out there that are saying that ballot by mail is not safe, it's actually one of the safest, your proof of identity is your signature. Just to give you an analogy, if I gave you my ballot right now, gave you my name, you would not be able to know my signature, it wouldn't be known to you. We have a vetted ballot signature on file when you registered. We did all of the credentialing, so we know what your signature, official signature looks like, and 100% of all early ballots are signature verified. Goes through a three-tier system where it's not just one person can establish good or bad. It actually has multiple tiers where two individuals that have been trained, signature verification training by affiliated forensic laboratories, that certify us to say we know what to look for. So again, and the other thing is, since I have the opportunity, the public is listening, we know that there's a concern. Well, I know my signature has changed. Let me just put that to rest. If we have not called, if you've been voting early, even if jazz of recently just a primary all the way back, and we have not called you to question your signature, that means we have your signature on file. We have multiple repositories of signature. When you're registered, when you're 18, all the way up to you're 40, 50 now, we have all of those signatures. If you ever checked in at a polling place, we have that signature roster signature, the E poll book signature, or if you voted early, we have all those affidavit signatures. So if we haven't called you, you do not have to have concern. And I, just to give one quick stat, 2018 general, 1.2 million ballots returned. We were only 307 that we could not validate. That's in the canvas, but that's a good number in a decimal that's really far out to say out of 1.2 million, only 307 that did not call us back, and we will reach out to vote. Also, last but not least, only those verified ballots are counted. So when it comes through, that's the process to make this not only safe and secure, but add to, and indeed, like I said, the transparency. Next slide.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question if I might.
Yeah, go ahead, Supervisor Chukri.
Ray, good morning. You look handsome in that tie. Thank you for wearing one on that.
I wore my cuff links for you.
Now, there we go. Hey, Ray, going back to two remarks, one by Mr. Gates and Mr. Jarrett about what we anticipate being an increase of day of drop-offs, right, or even leading up to Election Day just a day or two before, not being overwhelmed, but but receiving a high number of ballots being dropped off. You touch on something that's very important for the public to know, and that that is that those have to be verified, those signatures have to be verified, and that's a early ballot processing system. If we were to reach that number, that supposed number or potential number of 300,000 or whatever it might be, how long do you think, and I'm not going to hold you to it, but when you talk about verification, then tabulation, how long are we looking at doing something? That's question one. And then question two would be, if if someone came and said on Election Day, and they had their early ballot, and they wanted to vote that ballot, we would have to take that in from them, I would assume, and then give them a new ballot, correct? Is that how that would work? Those are just two different but distinct important questions, if you would please.
Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, I work backwards for your question, too, because that's the most important, that there is, again, some information out there that we want to clarify, specifically for Maricopa County. We have our site books, or also known as E poll books, are actually in-house built, and because of that, we actually have the ability to make a real-time connection to our voter registration database. Everything resides in our voter registration database, including that I sent you an early ballot. So the fact is, is that you do not need to surrender your ballot. And truth be told, is I could have given you three ballots. You could have called and said the dog ate it, here's your second. And then I spilled coffee on it, here's your third. Now, that sounds terrible, but behind the scenes, we know, for me to issue your second ballot, I need to void out your first. For me to issue that third ballot because the dog ate the second, I need to void out your first and second. So no matter what, we can't, if you walked in and gave me your third ballot, that doesn't mean you don't have your first and second. Using that as as to scare people, that the beauty is that because we're real-time, I know that you have three ballots, and I know you have or have not returned any of them. So when you walk in, I don't necessarily need you to surrender because of the technology. I can actually real-time look when you check in. It says you have received an early ballot behind the scene but have not returned it. So we do what I'll call a real-time provisional. It gives you the ability right then and there to to check in and void out that third ballot using that example, or if you only had one, the first ballot, and give you a regular ballot, a real-time provisional, meaning you don't have to surrender, nor do you have to go through the provisional process in its entirety, meaning envelope comes to us, we check to see if you returned your ballot. Guess what? We did that instantly when you were standing there. So they do not need to rescind.
So Ray, you can't, so you couldn't, you couldn't print a ballot out without voiding the other, right? Is there a fail-safe in the system?
Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, thank you for being the technical expert to voice that in lay terms. That's exactly right.
Okay.
I can't even give you a ballot until the system says, one, does this individual have an early ballot that has been returned? And the answer is yes, it forces them to a provisional, says, now, they may say, I don't remember returning that. Whatever the case may be, you have the right to vote a provisional, but it will not count if, obviously, we have that ballot back. But if it's not, then it will void real-time right then and there before we can even print a ballot.
Great.
The first part of your question was the number, the volume. What are we going to do and in what panic are we going to have? First and foremost is, we, in 2016, 2018, we've had this kind of volume, not this high anticipated, but upwards of 200 to 200 to 250,000. We are able to process those through signature verification the following day, meaning we put all hands on deck, we have 80 experts, if you will. The beauty of the process is we're doing it off of a digital image of the packet. When we get those election night, all the way up to 2:00 or 3:00 a.m., we're sending them, we're scanning them in to get a capture picture of that envelope. We put the physical envelope in a vault, bar proof vault, and we are able to disseminate those packages to all of our staff that are all signature verified, trained, even our downtown office, our Mesa office, to get us all hands on deck, they've all been trained, and we go through that three-tier process, and we are able to complete that signature verification. On 250,000, we were done in 2018 by noon. So with 500,000, apologies, but we'll be done by 5:00 p.m. Even if we don't, not to just throw folks at it, we want qualified voters. But so we'll have it done by Wednesday. The hangup that happened in 2018 was our old system was only able to tabulate 50,000 a day. So even when we hit them with 250,000 and said, here you go, it took them, if you do the math, five days to run those through because of the 8-bit technology. So again, thank you to the board for looking at our, how do we be best in class? And one of those things with getting a new system, the tabulation system now can run upwards of 100 to 150,000 in a regular shift. If we run into that 400,000, then we may run a second shift on Thursday. So we're confident that, and not to overreach, and since she said you wouldn't hold me to it, but we are absolutely confident that we can have these processed by the cure period, at least 95-plus percentage resolved. And there is, and when I mention cure period, a lot of folks don't know that there's a recent change this year that allows individuals that have questionable signatures up to five business days to come and validate. And when I say questionable, there may be only those 307 voters that we realized in 2018. But we still can't finalize until Tuesday, November 10th, no matter what. It's also the deadline for individuals who did not provide proper identity at the polls that they too must come in and have that five business days. So we're hoping that by that particular date that we will have, not, we're not, we're not. So we're hoping that by that particular date, that we will, not, we're optimistic because of the speed of the tabulation and knowing that we can do the signature verification, which is not the holdup, especially if we can put all hands on deck.
That's helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Ray. And Ray, if you and Scott need help moving boxes or heavy equipment, Mr. Gallardo would be happy to do so.
Well, he did have it where, I mentioned long ago, or I heard Supervisor Gallardo mentioned that he's putting on his election hat. And I will tell him that election hat looked nice on him, so we may want him to put it back on if he's.
He's willing to do whatever it takes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
And then I'm going to be, we're segueing into the in-person voting, but again, there is, on this particular screen, we talk about the early ballot secured drop boxes. Co-director Jared already mentioned about our contactless drop boxes. We have some really exciting options and venues that we're going to be mentioning in that. But the drive-through drop boxes, if we can get that messaging out now, if the public is listening, advocacy groups that are out there can say, we want to emphasize that if you have an early ballot, you have an option. If you don't trust the mail, I know, I hope you do because we haven't had any changes to that process. But if you don't, or you prefer to, then you look at these drive-through drop boxes that will be posted on our website, that you can then not even have to put yourself in line for individuals that are truly doing in-person voting and help us reduce that, for COVID purposes, reduce that and increase that distancing when needed. So in-person, early emergency, election day, I'm going to go ahead, obviously turn it over to Director Jared and let him go through that, and then I'll be here to stand behind him to answer any questions in our shared technology. But any questions on that, Chairman or members of the board? Any additional?
I'm seeing no further questions. Thank you, Ray.
With that, I'll switch over to Co-director Jared.
So before I begin, I did want to provide a few points of clarifications, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Chukri, to some of your questions as well. And I'll start with voters voting in person that have an early ballot. There is one additional security, well, there's many different additional security protocols in place, but there's one other that I'd like to highlight. And that is, we've programmed our precinct based tabulators to only accept ballots that are produced or printed in our ballot on demand. If a voter did receive that early ballot, there is no way for them to even be able to bring it in and insert it into our precinct based tabulators. It would reject it because of our programming. So that's one additional layer of security to prevent those early ballot recipients from being able to, if they requested one, two, or three, as Mr. Valenzuela described, to prevent them from being able to be counted and tabulated in the precinct. And then the only other way for them to get it back to us would be to mail those ballots back to us. And as Mr. Valenzuela described, those envelopes, those ballots would have been canceled. So there's no way for them to be tabulated and to double vote in this system.
So Scott, so you're saying there's a mechanism or a switch without divulging our security system, that once in that situation you just described, that would need to take place before it could even be tabulated?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Chukri, that's, that's correct. There's, there's absolutely no way for them to get that, that early ballot into one of our tabulators and have it be counted.
Thank you.
And then, and we'll discuss this a little bit more when we talk about tabulation, but the processing of those ballots that come, those early ballots that come back through the process. Mr. Valenzuela did describe how efficient and quick we are in the signature verification piece of this. But there are a couple more steps through that process. And one of those is our EV processing boards. Those are those bipartisan boards made up of Democrats, Republicans, independents, separating the ballot from the envelope. And we do have a limiting factor there, usually right around 90 to 115,000 per day we can process. However, if for some reason, the total number that came in through the late process or came in later exceeded our expectations, we do have the ability to expand the number of hours, right? Expand shifts. So we can be able to respond if there is an increase or more than what we are currently projecting. But right now, given our projections of 300 to 400,000, we would be able to get through 90 to 115 through those EV processing boards per day and maybe quicker if needed to. So now circling back to the rest of the in-person voting options. And one thing that we've learned through the four elections that we've performed in COVID-19, and especially in the March presidential preference election, in the August primary election, is we need to be flexible to be able to be, provide a reliable voting, in-person voting option. And that is why we have gone forward with proposing to the board a vote center model, one that if late in the game, there was a voting location that did need to close, for whatever reason that is, we would not be having to then take those voters that were assigned to that single individual location and having to transfer them to just one other location. In this model, every single voting, vote center that we will be providing during the early voting period, during the emergency voting period, and on election day, is available for a voter to use. They have that many options. But one thing that we will be different for this election is, we will be opening a significant number of our locations two days. So one of the ways that we can expand from the 99 locations that we used in the August primary and closer to the 165 to 175 for the November general election, is open up about 50 to 60 of those locations to be a two-day voting location. And that helps us in a couple different ways. Not only does it still expand that emergency voting period, if those voters did have an emergency that would prevent them from voting on election day, but also allows us to have a soft start on, on the day before the election. Those will be opening at 10:00 AM on, on the day before the election. That allows our poll workers to get familiar with the ballot on demand technology, make sure that they're viable and operational the day before the election. And then on election day, when we open up at 6:00 AM, every single one of our voting centers are ready to go and serve in-person voters. And there won't be any chance of those locations not being operational due to technology issues. So if we can go to the next slide. So this slide really highlights the way that we are expanding access in this election. And most of that is through this robust early voting period. But it's not only through that early voting period, it's the number of options that voters will have in each phase of the voting period. And that's what this chart is showing here. So on election day in 2016, voters had one in-person voting option. It was their assigned precinct. In this election, they're going to have anywhere from 165 to 175 locations. Now, these final numbers are a little bit fluid, we're presenting to the board, and the board will be considering the votes, the vote centers that will be used on election day through a board resolution on a later agenda item. And on that list, there's 166 locations. Since we submitted that resolution and that listing on Monday, we've been able to add four more. So we're up to, well, actually, we added five more and we lost one of them. So went up to 171, or back down to 170. So we'll be refining those, as well as some of the dates of when these locations will open within the next week. And then we want to put a pin in this, finalize it, so we can get our logistics, our training, all of the poll workers hired, and get that really nailed down towards the middle of next week. But it's not just election day that we're expanding voting on, for the emergency voting cycle. So that starts at 5:00 PM on the Friday before the election. In 2016, there were three options. They were all the elections department, the recorder's office, and the elections department office out in Mesa. Now, we're expanding that to be 90, approximately 90, opening on the Saturday before the election. But then, as I mentioned, on the Monday, we're going to be opening 60 to 50 more. So we're going to have approximately 150 locations open on that, that Monday, right before the election. And this also helps as providing an additional opportunity for those early ballot recipients to be able to return their ballot to us early, get it in the process early, so we can start that signature verification process that much earlier on. We can start the EV processing, separating the envelope from, or the ballot from the envelope. All of those processes, the earlier we can get started, the more of those results that we can include in our election night reporting at 8:00 PM on that Tuesday. But it's not just emergency voting, we're opening, if you compare back to 2016, we had 14 locations open for one week before the election. We're going to have 90 locations open. We're actually, we're just over 90 right now for that entire one week period before the election. And then for two weeks, we had eight locations open for two weeks. We're going to have just, just under 50 locations open for the, for the November general election. A huge increase. And how we've done that is, we've had to contact partners, work with, most of the malls in the valley are providing a location for this upcoming election. We've had to rent retail facilities. Some of the challenges that those retail facilities have been going through the last several years and not being, providing that brick and mortar in-person voting option, or our in-person shopping option, creating an opportunity for us to be able to use COVID-19 cares relief funds, be able to lease those, to turn those into in-person voting options. And then sports arenas and stadiums, we're nearly at every single Cactus League spring training facility in the valley, we will be able to provide a drive-through drop box, a contactless drop box location. So that's what we're referring to. So right now, we have between 12 and 13. We're still finalizing those. We have site visits scheduled over the next couple of weeks to make sure that they will work, but we have verbal agreements with all of our professional sports teams in the valley, as well as the Cactus League. So really great partnering opportunity here to serve voters and to provide those voters an option to return those early ballots to us. But we also.
Mr. Chairman, sorry Scott, I don't mean to interrupt you midway, but given the fact that we're talking about the drop boxes, can you just cover the security covered, or that we have surrounding that and that process? I'm not sure if Mr. Gates touched on that earlier, forgive me if he did, but what, what are the provisions that we will be implementing to protect the security of that?
So Mr. Chairman Supervisor Chukri, so we have three different types of drop boxes. The first type is they're located in a government facility. And we will have 20 to 24 of those located in city halls, town halls, and some of our Maricopa County library districts. So those are under constant supervision by the staff that are working within each of those complexes, those government facilities throughout the day. And then they're secured in the evening. Well, we send out, we have a courier program that is comprised of two member teams, and those two member teams are members of different parties. And they drive out and they pick up those ballots, as well as all those early ballots from our early voting locations on a daily basis. And they retrieve those ballots. They open up that secured lock, drop box that is locked, they transfer that into a transport bin, they use tamper evidence seals that have serial numbers on them, they seal those, those transfer cases or those transfer bins, they have a transfer slip that they take along with them. And if it is at a early voting location, the inspector at that location signs the slip as well as the two couriers that are working. If it's at a town hall, then it is, then it's the two courier sign as well as the representative of the town clerk. And what they're verifying is, these are the seal numbers that went on to that transfer bin, and then they're signing off on that. And then when those bins come back to us after those couriers complete the route, we then inspect that bin, compare it to that transfer slip to make sure those, those seal numbers are still, first off, the seals haven't been tampered with, and that the seal numbers match. So then that, that's why we're confident that those ballots are the exact number of ballots that came in at any one of those drop box locations. At that point in time, they are in our possession. We do a count of those ballots, and then we prepare them, and then they are either stored here in our vault, or then we transfer them to our vendor, who does the processing, and they're stored in their vault. And so that's the path of security for the drive-through, for the drop boxes that are any of the government facilities. The drive-through drop boxes will follow a very similar approach. They will not be unstaffed. We will have, not poll workers, but workers that will go through and will provide them training on how to man these drop boxes. And then those drop boxes, and there'll be different parties working those drop boxes. And it's really, it'll be a very simple process. Voters will come up, they'll hand them their ballot, and then our workers will then drop that into a locked, secure, early ballot drop box. And then at the end of the shift, all of those ballots will be, two members, different parties will transport those ballots back to us at the end of that shift, and then we'll go through a very similar process of counting those ballots, preparing those, either storing them in our vault or transferring them to our vendor, to store in their, their secure vault.
So Scott, is the idea here that for those individuals who are on the pebble, that they don't feel comfortable with mailing it in the US postal system, that this is an alternative for them that's an added convenience, if you will?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Chukri, that's absolutely right. But it's not only that. I mean, it's definitely an added convenience, they don't have to get out of their car, they can return it to us. But it's also an opportunity for them not to have to visit a voting location on election day, right? And potentially stand in line, or potentially take away a parking space for those other voters that may be there to cast their ballot in person. So it's just one of the other strategies that we're doing to increase, not only increase access, make it easier for voters to get that early ballot back to us, but also to better serve election day, and those voters that want to cast a ballot in person.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Supervisor Chukri for asking about that. It's a very important issue out there with our residents, they want to hear about that security. Mr. Jarrett, are those, you said that at the drive-by drop boxes, those are taken downtown at the end of every shift. Is that the case with, well, first of all, are there drop boxes everywhere then, including emergency day? Are there some days of voting that we don't have drop boxes available?
So, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Gates, so every early voting location does serve as a drop box location as well. Those are supervised by poll workers during that early voting process. And on a daily basis, we go out and collect and retrieve those ballots and bring those back to us. The, the drop boxes that are in government buildings, some of those are opening up on October 12th, and they'll be opened up right through election day. Many of those are not open on the weekends, they're just Monday through Friday, and they follow the hours that the city clerks establish for, for those facilities. And then some of those, the vast majority of those are open on election day as well, and they'd be open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Now, the drive-through drop boxes, we're looking to open those on October 24th, so that's a Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then they would then close down and then not open up again until the following Saturday, October 31st, following similar, similar hours, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on October 31st. Then on, on Sunday, November 1st, it'd be 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. On Tuesday, Monday, November 2nd, it'd be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM as well. And then on election day, they'd be open for the entirety of election day, starting at 6:00 AM till 7:00 PM. And then any vehicle that is in line at that point in time would be able to drop off their early ballot right up until, potentially slightly after 7:00 PM. The vehicle would have to be in line at that point in time to be able to do that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Jarrett, if the, oh, so how many drop off boxes are there going to be at each one of these locations? Because I know in the past, I can recall earlier elections where I've seen those things kind of, you know, almost overflowing. So what are our plans on that front?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Gates, we're going to start the day with two of those at each location. Each one of those can, we can put over 1,000 ballots in each one of those, those drop, those secure early ballot drop boxes. But we will have the ability to redeploy extras if they are needed. They'll have They'll have, the workers that are staffing those will have access to be able to call our, our command center on our hotline to let us know that they are filling up. And then we have warehouse teams, drivers, that could then send out additional drop boxes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
So other ways that we are increasing access to vote in person is, we're making sure that every one of our locations are, not everyone, but the good portion of them are along light rail, bus routes and freeways. I talked about making sure that we have sufficient voting locations in high density in person, or areas that have had a historical high amount of high density in person voting, but also the Native American and rural communities. And then right now, at this point, if you are within what I call the urban area, those outer loops, the 202 loop, the 101 loop, the 303 loop, the vast majority of those areas have a voting location dispersed every two to three miles. So they do provide a robust number of options for voters to participate in on election day. We can go to the next slide. Other ways that, and these are coming even from some of our lessons learned, and how we inform voters of how to participate in this election. And one of the things that we are doing, we first implemented and rolled it out in the August primary election, was to have a very robust website that provided a lot of searchable functionality for voters to find out where their closest voting location was, which voting location, based on city or town. If they entered in an address, maybe where they work, it would then return the closest location to where they work. But it also, we added wait times. We want to be able to give the voters information that they need to choose to successfully participate in this election. One of those will be wait times. In the August primary, we had our poll workers reporting these every 15 minutes, and we'll implement a similar strategy for the November general election. So every 15 minutes, voters can go to this website, find out what a wait time is at any one of our open locations, and then choose which location is, works best for them. But we do advise voters to make a plan for this upcoming November general election. We will be posting these and the searchable functionality probably by early October, but the list will be available on our location, on our locations dot Maricopa dot vote later today. But given it's COVID-19, we know that it's fluid. Some of these locations could change. If they go and they look at these locations later this week, or even in early October, we do advise that voters go back before they actually make their trip and verify that they have the right information before they leave their house. However, if a voter does not have access to a website, they can call the Star Call Center. And that number is 602-506-1511. And the Star Call Center does have representatives that has all of this information at their fingertips as well. So they can advise voters, they can search based on the voter's address, based on the voter's work address, all of those types of things, and let voters know what their closest location is, or more, most convenient, based on any multiple factors that, that we allow for them to search, including the wait times.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Bill?
Yep. Mr. Jarrett, just a question on that. So let's say we've got, you know, we're starting to see those lines popping up, and I see fields here. I'm wondering if, you know, through our social media channels, we could be sending out tweets, you know, you know, running into lines, hey, head over to, you know, Veterans Memorial Coliseum, no wait right now, or, you know, five-minute wait, or something like that. And then the other thing that's effective around the valley are these digital billboards. And I don't think it's too late at this point. I mean, have we thought about maybe reaching out to them? Again, you could have those as, as the unexpected happens on election day, where we could, you know, flash up on a digital billboard, hey, you know, these locations, no wait right now? I mean, I think you see that on these urgent care centers. I think I've seen that before on digital billboards. Is that a possibility?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, so we will be deploying several different strategies. But yes, one of those is our communications team. Any timelines are starting to form and get over 25, 30, 35 minutes, we will be informing the public of that through the social media accounts. And then what are their, their options? We are, are also going to be, we form teams, that then we can deploy some of those teams. They will be equipped with some whiteboards, just in case those voters that don't go to the website or don't have access, but they know there is a voting location, and they do show up at that location. And it's not quite as technology savvy as what you're describing, but it is, it will work. And if there is a location that does have a wait time that's starting to exceed 30, 30 to 45 minutes, we'll send out that team, they can man the end of that line, and then they can post on that whiteboard outside with a stand, what are the closest locations, and what are the wait times at those, in case that voter didn't feel confident going up and asking our staff members. So that's really the strategy, to inform those voters, to get that, that wait time down below 30 potential, 30 minutes, and then inform them through our social media accounts as well. And then there's one other strategy that they'll be implementing is, is to make sure that they move that, we have a sign that informs voters if they are dropping off an early ballot, that they can skip the line. So to make sure that they're moving that sign to be at the end of the line, so voters also can see that, they can inform themselves visually based on that, those signs, and then make the decision themselves without having to come ask one of our, our poll workers.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Another question?
No, go ahead.
So the other piece of this is informing voters on how to successfully participate in this election, whether that is to be registered. So the voter registration deadline for this election is October 5th. So we already have commercials through our paid media strategy, and commercials on television, as well as streaming media. We have commercials over the radio. I've, I heard them coming in, driving in this morning. We have digital billboards that are advertising these, the registration deadline, as well as going through social media accounts as well. That, so that's phase one. That will end right after the voter registration deadline. We will be open here at McTech. We have our drive-through drop box that is accepting voter registration, and that will, we'll have that manned and staffed until midnight on October 5th, accepting voter registration forms. We also then, the next phase of the campaign, which will start right after October 5th and run for a couple of weeks, will really be to talk about security of this election, a lot of the protocols that we're implementing, the security over the mail-in ballot process and our tabulation centers, and how they, how voters can track that early ballot themselves and sign up for that, that text messaging, and also where to return their early ballot. And then as we near election day and we start opening up for those two-week vote centers, that's when we'll transition in to informing voters that their voting location may have changed from 2016 or 2018. It's really important that voters are aware that there may be a change, and then how to vote and how to return their ballots to us. So those are the, the three phases of our, our paid media. We'll have ads in both Spanish and English. And then we have a whole variety of different options and avenues that we're communicating with voters. Another is our BeBallotReady.Vote website. It's the customized dashboard that voters can use, enter in some of their personal information, their, their house address, their, their last name, and either the last four of their social, their voter registration ID number, or their state ID number. And then they can get a customized dashboard that tells them if they're registered to vote, if they're not, where they can go get in for more, more information on how to register. It'll link them to service dot Arizona to be able to sign up and register through that process. It tells them if they are a permanent early voter. It tells them what's on their ballot. They can get a copy of their sample ballot, and also then tells them, links them to the voting locations page, so they can find out where our vote centers are. We're creating election toolkits. This will be to inform, some of those will be videos, talking about how to mail in ballots and the security over, over the ballots, to also how we're tabulating and what, and what we'll be doing in our tabulation center. So a whole variety of videos that will be posted on our website, as well as at BeBallotReady.Vote. And then we will be sending direct mailers, Mr. Valenzuela described, to non-pebble voters, letting them know that they do have the opportunity to, to, to sign up for an early ballot, whether it be one time or permanently, but also to remind those early ballot recipients of when the mail-back dates are, right? And inform them so they do get it back to us on time, or what their options are to return it to us, whether it be at one of our drop box locations or early voting locations. And then we'll also do something similar that we did in August primary was robo calls. For those phone numbers that we do have, numbers for, for those voters, we'll be sending through a robo call with those same types of reminders. We could go to the next slide, please? So with COVID-19, we've partnered with the Maricopa County Public Health Department to identify what are those safety protocols that we need to implement for our voting locations, as well as at our Maricopa County Election Center and Tabulation Center. So those, those protocols include, so when voters go to an in-person voting location, they're going to see six feet of physical distancing. All of our check-in stations, our voting booths will all be six feet apart from one another, so voters can vote and be physically distanced. All of our poll workers will be wearing face masks, as well as face shields throughout the voting process. They will have gloves. They will be frequently cleaning high-touch surfaces, so that would be any lights, switches, door handles, the voting booths themselves, the check-in stations. But we, we will also be implementing very similar types of protocols here at the Elections Department to ensure that our staff is safe, and all those central board workers that are coming in. We'll have over 300 temporary staff that will come in to support this election, and many of them working over a month. And we need to keep those staff members safe as well. So we're really appreciative of the guidance that we received from the County Public Health Department, and, and really implementing these safety protocols. We can go to the next slide. So there's been several questions today about our tabulation and reporting, especially the timelines for us to be able to report those late earlies. But there's also some other information that voters need to know about this election. We've introduced a brand-new tabulation equipment, which is a great thing. Mr. Valenzuela described how much quicker it is than our old equipment that we had purchased in 1996. But along with that equipment comes a brand-new ballot style. And we've talked about this through the March Presidential Preference Election, we've talked about this in August, but there's still going to be many voters that this is going to be their first time voting using, in Maricopa County, using ovals rather than arrows. So it is going to be a brand-new ballot style. We're confident that it's more intuitive to complete in oval, and it should make the voting process that much easier for voters. Mentioned the new equipment, not only does it count votes a lot quicker, our old equipment was limited at about 3,000 to 5,000 per machine per hour. Our new equipment can reach up to speeds of 6,000 to 8,000 per machine per hour. But we're also not limited from a memory capacity to only doing it six hours a day. So there was questions about if we received over the 300,000 to 400,000 ballots of those late ballots that came in our, at the very end of the process, what would we need to do? Well, we can always expand our shifts and work later into the evenings to be able to count those, those ballots and still meet our timelines and our goals. And then the state legislature and the governor's office in the last, in the last legislative session, recognized that counting these early ballots was a challenge, and they increased the amount of time that we can start. So that's why we are encouraging voters to drop off that ballot to us. If they've already made their decisions, vote that ballot and get it back to us as early in the process, because we can start tabulating 14 days before the election. And then that will, all of those results that we have tabulated before the election, and our goal is everything that has been received by end-of-day Saturday, to be included in those election reporting results at 8:00 PM on the Tuesday before the election. If we can get through, and we can get some of those even that come in on Sunday, we'll do that as well. But that is the goal, everything that was at the end-of-day Saturday. And then after that, we'll, we'll, we'll be doing nightly returns through that election night. That'll include anything that's coming back from the precincts. It's probably going to be right around 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM. There'll be subsequent reports of results. And then we'll have a daily update at 7:00 PM every day to report results. And we have expanded that to be at 7:00 PM, because we wanted that much extra time every day to get through those ballots. So that's the goal, is at 7:00 PM to have a daily release of anything that we're uploading and releasing to the public. And then we'll, in those releases, we'll, they'll be accompanied by a press release that will describe how many ballots we still have left in the process. So voters and the public are informed of exactly where we are and how many more we have to count. And then our goal, so we have a statutory timeframe of five business days after the election. So that's a 5:00 PM on the Tuesday following the election, that voters have to be able to cure any, their signatures. So if they had a signature and we had a question that, that it wasn't matching, they have up until that point in time, same with provisional voters. So our goal is to have everything completed by that, that cure deadline, which would include any signatures that cured over that process. I know that there's been several questions about the reporting. I know Supervisor Gates, you had mentioned that you had some other questions about this. Were you able to get all your questions answered, or do you have additional?
No, I don't have any more questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, if we can go to the next slide. So as both Ray and I have mentioned, we could not provide a, a election without a community coming together to support this election. And that includes, number one is our poll workers, really willing to come and work at our, our voting locations. It also includes our central board workers. We have an army of volunteers, right, that come and support these elections, staff our polling location, and work incredibly long hours to serve voters. We're credibly appreciate, appreciation of, of these poll workers and central boards. But it's also county departments. We have employees throughout the county coming to help, help the Elections Department, anywhere from the County Public Health Department, that helped us design our safety protocols, the Office of Enterprise Technology, that helps us set up these locations, to county workers themselves. Some of them are taking two weeks of vacation to come and work as a troubleshooter or as a poll worker. So incredibly grateful to those county workers. But we have the cities and towns coming to the table to provide, some of them vote centers or drop box locations. We have community groups. We have the political party observers we're working with. We met with them this last week, talking about all of the opportunities that the political parties have to observe voting process, whether it's in our vote centers, where it's here at our tabulation center, or it's during the EV processing, but also at our drop box locations. And monitoring the couriers as they're driving around, picking up all of these ballots. There will be political party observers out there monitoring those activities, and we welcome that, because it just adds one extra layer of oversight and integrity to the process, knowing that those, those political parties are involved. But then we also have our new partners, and we're really thrilled by this. The professional sports teams in the valley have really come to the table to help serve Maricopa County voters. We have the Coyotes providing, and the city of Glendale, the Gila River Arena out in Glendale. So that will be a vote center, serving voters, as well as allowing voters to drop off their early ballots. We have the Phoenix Suns, working with the Veterans Memorial Coliseum and Arizona State Fairgrounds, to be able to provide a voting location at the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, as well as a drive-through drop box. We have the Arizona Cardinals that are going to be providing their stadium as a drive-through drop box opportunity. And then we're working with Salt River Native American Community and the Diamondbacks to provide their spring training facility as a, as a drive-through drop box location. In addition to the Cactus League, really, they, they were the ones that helped us work through the logistics of identifying the right people to contact at all of the spring training facilities, encouraged this activity. And then all the owners, the individual owners, the teams for all the arenas and stadium owners. We're really grateful to be working with these partners. So really grateful to be working with these partners, um, and to help serve Maricopa County voters.
Mr. Chair.
Any questions on?
Yeah, Supervisor Gates.
Sorry, I apologize for interrupting you there, Mr. Jarrett. So, uh, electioneering is always an issue, right? And I'm wondering about how you're going to deal with electioneering with these drop boxes being outside. Um, I'm picturing, you know, people, so first of all, I assume the 75-foot line will be from the drop boxes, right, not from the inside, correct?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, we are, because it's not actual voting, it's just a Dropbox location, um, and because they are driving, there's vehicles involved, we're setting up a safety perimeter, not the 75-foot line. So if there are political observers that do want to observe this process, they can. Now, there's no voting occurring, right, at these locations. These individuals are coming with their ballots already filled out and completed and then just dropping it off to us. But if there did want to be someone that, um, showed up and did a little bit of electioneering, they would have to stand outside of our safety perimeter, make sure that they were safe as well as the vehicles could get through. They couldn't interfere with the process and the drive, drive-up process.
So I, I don't know, I was having a little trouble hearing you there. You, you have like a safety zone, is that what you said, that you're setting up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, yes, a safety zone. And each one will be unique, the exact, so when we go out and do our site visits at these locations, we're going to identify the area and where, if media wanted to show up and sort of do some, some news clips or, um, take some video of the drive-through Dropbox, that's where that could happen. If there were individuals that, the political party observers that wanted to, to observe the process, that's where they would all, uh, stand as well. But we'll identify those and, and, and mark them as areas that, that, that's where that activity can happen.
Okay, and I assume you'll be communicating with all the parties on how you're interpreting this to not, you know, that there doesn't have to be a 75-foot limit from the, from the drop boxes, right? Because I'd hate to see, you know, that turn into an issue on Election Day, but instead have that clearly communicated to the parties in advance.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, yes, we are, and we've been in contact with the parties describing that process as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If we can go to the next slide. And this slide just highlights all the key dates that voters should know to, uh, participate in this election. The first one has already passed. We've mailed out all of the, um, we call them the UACABA, but the ballots to our uniform oversees military and oversees citizens. So that happened on September 14th. But the next big deadline for voters to be aware of is October 5th voter registration deadline, um, and that is at midnight to get those, uh, registration forms returned to us. And then we have October 7th, that's when we will be, uh, sending out ballots to all those voters on the permanent early voting list. So if you have signed up for the test messaging alert, you will be receiving.
Quick question on that, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a question?
Yeah, on October 7th, we mail all the early ballots on one day?
Submit, Mr. Chairman, yes, all, all the early ballots for those permanent early voters that are signed up. There still is a, um, all the way up until, uh, E-11 or October 23rd, voters have until to request an early ballot. So if any voters request that early ballot, uh, in that period, that's their, their ballot will be made, mailed after that October 7th.
Okay, thank you.
And then we do recommend the other deadlines here, uh, October 24th, that's the first weekend we will start to have vote centers open, so that's Saturday, October 24th. And then October 27th, that's the, the day that we're recommending, uh, voters mail back their ballot if they choose to put it in, in the mail. And then November 3rd is Election Day, and we're all eagerly, uh, working towards that day to serve the voters and have a very successful election. With that, Mr. Valenzuela and I will open it up to any other questions that maybe we didn't answer throughout this presentation.
Are there any other questions for Scott or Ray?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to thank, uh, of course, Scott and Ray and the whole team down there for, for this, uh, election plan. Really, uh, I, I don't think I've ever, uh, seen such a comprehensive plan before in front of us. These are some trying times and, and, um, it looks like, I sit here and I'm, we're going through this presentation, okay, what's missing, what's missing? I'm trying to think, what is it that's not being covered? And one of them was, was the electioneering. And I cannot stress the importance of really, as a, as a county, as an election team, that we really start to think about electioneering. We, we want to, we want folks to, to be able to exercise their right. We want folks to be able to, to do their stuff, you know, campaigning and stuff outside the 75-foot line of, of course. It's always been kind of a tradition, uh, when it comes to elections, not only in Maricopa County, but across the country, we've always had folks, I mean, I've been out there myself as a candidate, you know, handing out my palm card and asking folks to support me. Um, so we've all done it, but, uh, these are much different times right now. I mean, you have some, uh, folks that are very excited. You have not only the political parties, but you have outside organizations coming in. So I cannot stress the importance of really Scott and Ray to, let's really think this through in terms of electioneering. You know, how do we make sure our polling sites are secure? How do we make sure that voters have the ability to, to, uh, walk out of their car and walk into a polling site and, and not be, um, uh, you know, obstructed at all? You know, we don't want to break down the day of voting, that flow of voting. Uh, yes, we're going to have some candidates out there that are going to, uh, ask folks to vote for them, and that's perfectly okay. It's legal, it's, it's what's in the law, it's why we have a 75-foot line. But we just have to be extremely careful, and you have some exciting people, some folks that are very excited on both sides right now, and, and, and you're seeing it in, in other states that are having special elections. So I just want to stress the importance of, let's really focus on Election Day, the security, our response when there is a situation. We have a, we had a small case in the primary election. I, I did, uh, talk to Scott on that day out there in Tolleson. But we just want to make sure that we're extremely cautious, uh, on Election Day when it comes to electioneering, and we have a, a quick response. Uh, I don't know what that response would be, but, uh, I'll leave it to our legal team and, and Scott and everyone else to kind of make sure that we're prepared on that. Outside of that, I just have a couple of questions, Scott, and I think one of the big, I started thinking like, what could, you know, the, the lawyers, we haven't even started voting, and lawyers are already lining up on both sides. And, and one of the things, and then I read an article, a couple of articles over the weekend, over the signature verification on, on some of our early ballots and, and how that's done. And I kind of, I, when I was sitting here, I brought it back up. There was one that was done by CNN on Monday talking about the signature verification. You have both sides having different opinions. One wants real strict compliance, the other one kind of wants a, a little bit more, uh, a liberal side of it. But, um, the signature verification, and, and it was great. I heard Ray stated that, uh, I think it was in 2018, there was, out of all the ballots that were cast, there were 307 voters, uh, that never responded to our, our calls to, to verify if this was their signature, and that is great. It's a very low number considering all the ballots, but even 307, uh, even though it seems small comparison to the number of ballots that we sent out, but I guarantee you, if a candidate loses by 306 votes, it becomes an issue and the lawyers start lining up. So I would just, you know, do everything we can, um, Ray and Scott, to really try to, if there is a signature that is being questioned, we do everything we can, and, and I know you guys are, but, you know, really put some emphasis because people are watching, and there's a lot at stake. And when you're, you know, we're talking, let's be, you know, let's talk real, if we're talking about the balance of the state legislature, 307 votes could really make a difference in certain legislative races. So I just want to really put some emphasis on the signature verification. I know they go through a training. I went through that same training. Sure, it's changed a lot since I was there, but, uh, really be careful on the whole signature verification. We want to make sure we have a, a, a clean election, that if there is, uh, a ballot that, that, uh, that the signature was, was, was signed by someone else, of course, we want to catch those. But if there is any signatures that are being questioned, uh, we want to do everything we can to really make sure that, uh, that, uh, that we count every ballot that should be counted. Um, the, the stadium and the sports arenas, if you'd asked me six months ago, I would say, don't do it, but I think it's different now. I really do. Uh, there, there's some excitement, uh, out there if these, if our, our, our franchises that we have, let it be, uh, hockey or basketball or, or baseball, if they do what I think they're going to do and really, uh, encourage folks to come to their site to drop off their ballot or come vote, I think that's good. It draws excitement. If, you know, if you're a Suns fan and you want to go to the Coliseum and, and cash your ballot, hey, by all means, and, and no different than the, you know, our, our Coyotes or, or Diamondbacks or whatever the team is. So I think it's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, these sites are going to be a little special, and I think your folks are going to come down and really exercise their rights at some of these sites, so I'm really excited. On the, on the election day, and I know Supervisor Gates asked, uh, quite a few questions on that, and I, uh, very well pointed out, um, I would anticipate we are going to have some long lines, only because the number of people that are, are going to be, uh, coming out to vote, I think they're estimating probably the largest turnout we've ever had here in, in the state of Arizona. But one of the things, uh, Scott, I thought our plan was to have, I thought it was the marshal or someone, more than just a whiteboard, but someone who is going to monitor the line. So if you do have a line at a particular site, that you're going to have, one of the board workers, I will assume would be the marshal, to be going through, making sure that if someone didn't need to be in line, that they would not be in line. Is that not the case? Are we not utilizing the marshal to kind of be the line monitor?
Some, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Garde, we do, we, the, the additional staff that would send out with the, the whiteboard would be in addition if we do have areas that the line did start to exceed up to the 35, 45-minute mark. But the marshal will be doing that throughout the day and at those other times, as well as working with other clerks within the voting location. So one of the things that we're doing for this election is we will have, uh, at least 10 poll workers at these locations, and some of the locations that have 12 to 15 check-in stations, those, uh, um, will have up to 12 poll workers. And so some of the clerks will assist with that responsibility of managing the line, and then also reporting the wait times on a 15-minute basis.
Okay, very good.
And the only way to report the wait times is for them to be outside, going out and counting the number of voters that are in line.
Very good, and let me, I dog-eared a couple of these pages here. Um, the, the, and, and I think there is some, and just, uh, and, and unfortunately, it's just, just, um, political rhetoric, but political rhetoric tends to, uh, influence how people behavior is, and I think there is some, um, concern. Uh, I don't have that concern, but there are some out there that have concerns about the post office and, you know, is my ballot really going to be delivered and so on? I know the recommendation is to have them, uh, uh, sent out. We talked about sending out robo reminders. Uh, when are those robo reminders encouraging people to vote and, and get their ballots? And when are they scheduled to be, um, sent out? And, you know, or let it be a robo or an email or something that we're sending out to voters to make sure they voted and get it in on time? I know we, I think the, the day was, was it the 27th? Yeah, the 27th was encouraged to get your ballot, uh, if you're going to mail it, to mail it in by the 27th. But I think these robo reminders are really important because I do believe, if you're going to be a voter like me where I get my early ballot, and unfortunately I set it to the side and I get it to later, you're going to have a number of voters doing that. And if the last day to request an early ballot, and I know you're going to get quite a few, folks are going to be requesting on that October 23rd, take in consideration, it's going to take a day or two to process it, get in the mail, get it voted over. So now you're looking, you know, a voter is going to get this ballot on the 26th, and we're encouraging people to vote it on the 27th. So I think those robo reminders or whatever communication we have to the voters is very critical. Do we have like an idea of how often these robo reminders are going to be sent out, reminding voters?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Garde, so, uh, we've identified, and so that last day of mail back is one of those target deadlines that we want, that we'll be using the robo calls, and those will be, we usually break it up just with the number of voters that we're speaking about. We have to break it up in two different chunks, so it's usually the two days before. Uh, so for that October 27th date, it would be, um, October 25th and then October 26th if those robo calls have started, um, being sent out to those voters to remind them of what that deadline is. So that's usually the practice, is a couple of days before the deadline.
And, and thank you, Scott. And just, um, on the, I, I mean, providing information to the public is, is, to me, is, it's critical. I mean, that's, it not only does it bring credibility to our, uh, to our process, but it really just informs folks of, of, uh, of where we're at on the process, and, and little reminders are always good. Um, the, when we talk about a, a media campaign, I'm assuming it's not a paid, I don't, I know, uh, Mr. Gates asked about the electronic billboards. I'm, is that a, it's not a paid campaign, is it? Or is it just social media campaign? We have English and Spanish, English and Spanish ads. Is that just social media or is that a paid type campaign?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Garde, we do have a paid media campaign, uh, and given the, the change in the model that we're, uh, we're implementing for voters, we wanted to make sure that voters had the information correct, we're also able to use COVID-19 cares funds to support this, this media campaign, um, the paid media strategy. But we do have a robust earned media campaign as well with a, uh, our communications teams for both the Recorder's Office and the Elections Department will go, be out there making the circuit with, uh, the morning news programs, the, doing interviews with radios. We're really inviting them to do a whole variety of things, observe a vote center being set up so that we can highlight the safety protocols, all of those types of, of strategies to be able to get the word out to voters. But we are paying through a paid media campaign, yes.
And, and that's, that's, that's awesome because the more information we can get out there, um, to educate the voters, uh, I think it's, it's, it's critical and it's money well spent. Just on the tabulation and reporting results, the October, or the, I'm sorry, the, the November 10th, um, uh, goal to complete counting, um, if we can hit that, that would be wonderful. I mean, that is, that is, uh, that's literally just a week later to be able to have an election with, uh, the participation that we're having to have it all completed by the 10th. I think normally in previous elections, it's always close to Thanksgiving that we, we, we finish up the election, but having the November 10th goal, I think is, it's, it's, it's awesome to see that. The one thing that I don't see on here, and we talked about this, Scott, but I want to bring it up, is on election night, I, and I don't, I'm assuming we're kind of utilizing the same processes we had in the primary, where we had the receiving sites. And so the polls will close at, at 7:00. Um, the, the, the memory pack and, and, and all the other official documents are packed up, and the, a Republican and Democrat are going to go to a receiving site. Is that still the case? And where are they located? Because that, to me, it's like a delay in getting the votes to downtown Phoenix to be tabulated. I understand why they're there, but I'm assuming we're still using the receiving sites.
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Garde, yes, we will have approximately 14 different receiving sites located throughout the valley. 14, uh, for the upcoming November general election, and those will, so on, on average, you have anywhere from 10 to, 10 to 12 different locations feeding into those receiving sites, those, uh, the poll Those, the poll workers do deliver the secure items that we need to return back to the Election Department that night, as well as the memory cards. They do that with members of different parties, as well as we do have MC SO sheriff's deputies staffing each one of those locations to provide additional layers of security. So that is the same process that we'll use for this election. We are implementing a few other procedures to streamline it, to get those ballots back to us as quickly as possible, so we can get those results reported on election night. We know that the public's eagerly awaiting all those returns from, from all the voting locations.
Yeah, I can, I think we, I think all five of us end up getting telephone calls from the media, asking when the results are going to come through, and, and so I think whatever communication we can give to the media, and just the public in general, of letting them know this, the status periodically, you know, it's kind of like, like, I hate to use this analogy, but, you know, like an emergency disaster, where they're always keeping the media informed of the current situation. And it's kind of the similar type situation. They just want to know exactly when the results, or when some of the results are going to be, and how many sites have yet to be reported, and stuff like that, that they're, they're waiting for. And a lot of times, it's just communicating that. I know you have a great media team, as Phil's and his group as well can help as well, but just keeping the media, the public informed on the status on, on election day. You know, if we have two sites that are outstanding, that have not, the numbers have not arrived at the receiving site, and just letting the public know, and the media know, that there are, you know, a couple of election sites that we're still waiting for to come in. It's simple stuff like that, that I think kind of calms people down, and they know the ballots are not wandering around somewhere, that they are in the process, and they're coming in. So it's simple, keeping the media communicated, I think, would be a great step. And I know you guys are doing that already, but just want to reemphasize it. With that, Mr. Chairman, I just think they did a great job. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gardo, we are creating a informational packet that we're going to be releasing to the media as well, that will describe when they can expect returns, so to achieve exactly what you're describing. So they, they have that information beforehand, so they know when to expect these releases coming out, not only on election night, but on the days subsequent to election.
Which, which is the receiving site that is furthest from downtown Phoenix? Which is the one that's, do you know?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gardo, we haven't finalized those receiving sites at this point in time. There's still a few locations that we're trying to add. Once we have all the locations, that's when we go through and do an analysis to identify where, where the best location is to place a receiving site.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, again, Scott and Ray have done a great job, real comprehensive approach on how we're going to deal with the November election. I'm excited. I think we were ready to rock and roll. There's always issues that pop up that were never expected. I always try to think, like, outside the box, like, what could possibly happen? But I think we are, I know for a fact, we are prepared for November 3rd, and I think we're going to have a great day. Folks are going to be able to come out and, and have their voices heard, and that's, that's the important thing. So, great job, Scott and Ray, and our whole team.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ray or Scott? Okay. Well, and Ray and Scott, I'd just like to add my thanks. You know, most of the questions that we've gotten as board members, I believe, have come from issues that are happening outside of our jurisdiction. You know, I think that we, we really have established the model that people should be following for how to do an election, and I thank you for that. So this is item number 24 on our agenda, Presentation and Adoption of Election Day and Emergency Voting Plan. I'll now consider that item.
Mr. Chair would move approval of this item.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, the next item is, again, taken out of order, is Agenda Item Number 77, Changes to Our CARES Act Budget. And I'll call on Leanne Bone for this important presentation.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I want to hear from Leanne, too, but we are two hours into this meeting, and haven't voted on but one item. So I would like to make sure we're mindful of the time, because I do have a hard stop at 12 o'clock.
And I should point out to everyone that as acting chairman today, I am not going to buy lunch. So you might want to take that into consideration as well.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I will be, I will be brief. I don't think we'll take more than about 15 minutes of your time here. I think there's a presentation. There we go. So thank you for this opportunity to talk about the CARES Act budget, and to talk about some revisions that we'd like to recommend. We've had the opportunity over the last, over the last couple of months to assess programmatic needs in the community, so we have some suggestions today. Myself and Bruce Liggitt are Human Services Director. We'd like to make some recommendations for new and expanded programs, and also some changes to our budget allocation to support those programs. So to start here on this slide, this current CARES Act allocation, just a refresher of where we're at today. The board approved and has modified now a budget of $246.5 million for essential public health and emergency response. So I've listed here primary categories that are in this. I haven't listed quite everything, but if you recall, this is case investigation and contact tracing, testing, not only for COVID, but also for flu. We have personal protective gear, infectious disease guidance, school support, and then we have a large category, ongoing, ongoing emergency preparedness and response. This, this was a bit of a reserve for us, because we don't know what's coming next with COVID. And so you'll see some recommendations for adjustments to that budget towards the end of this presentation. We also set aside $77.5 million for safe county services and workspaces. So we have made some investments in our workspaces to ensure that we can serve customers safely and keep our staff safe. This, too, you'll see some recommended adjustments to this budget towards the end of the presentation. $42 million was designated for homelessness response and prevention, $23 million for our small businesses program, and then $10 million for supporting individuals and families. So moving on to the next slide, and then the one after that, actually, I think I have a remote here. We'd like to start by talking about the Small Business Program, and make a recommendation for expanding this program. If you'll recall, the board allocated initially $23 million for the program that began July 9th and ran through July 31st. We spent $2.4 million of that $23 million initially. So knowing that we hadn't quite hit the target on that, we talked to our partner, Arizona Community Foundation, and asked for some guidance on what we might alter in the program requirements to, to support more businesses. The board made two very significant changes for what we're calling 2.0 of the Small Business Program that launched August 17th. Number one, we removed the requirement that businesses not have received other forms of aid. Many, many businesses received payroll protection program funding. What we recognize now is that helps them with payroll, which is a really large expense, but it doesn't necessarily help them with their other operating expenses, whether that's leases, or supplies, or anything else that's non-personnel in nature. And there was still a really significant need in the community for that support. Secondly, the board approved increasing the maximum amount that can go out to an individual business from $10,000 to $25,000, so made that a richer benefit. I am pleased to report that this week, we are slated to spend the entire $23 million appropriation on the Small Business Program. The end date for this program is October 2nd. So in order to keep it going, we will need to add some additional funds to it, if the board chooses to do that. But in addition, we would like to, given the fact that we have hundreds, literally hundreds of applicants in our queue, we would like to talk about extending the deadline to the end of October, but also consider an expanded scope and additional funding for this program of $40 million.
Yeah, Leanne, I have a quick question. Where do we stand on figuring out how to handle the newer businesses that have been established either in 2019 or 2020?
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's a great question. So currently, right now, in order to be eligible for the Small Business Program, you need to have been in operation prior to January 1st of 2019. That allows us to show that year-over-year decline in revenues. And so I'm working on developing a program that would look at businesses that were in operation after that date, but perhaps instead look at unmet expenses rather than that revenue decline. And so it'll take us a little bit of time to retool a program to be able to bring it forward to you, to serve those newer businesses, those startups, but we intend to do that over the coming weeks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In the next category, which is essential public health and emergency response, we have two recommendations for new programs. So the first of these is a nonprofit assistance program. The board allocated $5 million in their last budget revision. So the intent of these awards would be to support our social service nonprofits that have either experienced a significant increase in demand due to COVID, or perhaps are dealing with unplanned large expenses. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bruce Liggitt to come up and talk about this program in a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. Quickly, the nonprofit assistance program is designed to really address agencies that are providing basic, essential human services and social services. So these nonprofit agencies are delivering services to children, families, seniors, veterans now. And working with, and based on the success of the Small Business Program with the Community Foundation, we will work with them, and they will issue grants out to small and large agencies to be able to receive some assistance to meet what they've lost in revenue due to COVID, or to change the manner in which they can deliver services to be more responsive and stop the spread of COVID. So we're talking things about perhaps employment assistance, housing, engagement, clothing, shelter, hot meals, transportation, those kind of essential core human services. That's what the program did.
Thank you.
So the other program that we'd like to consider in this category is school support, and specifically, oh, thank you, specifically tackling the digital divide. So as you'll recall, the board allocated $20 million to school support earlier this year in this budget, and to date, we've spent some of that money, about $2.5 million, on cloth face masks distributed through schools. But when this new school year started, it became clear fairly quickly that not all students have the equipment and the internet access they need to participate successfully in virtual learning. What I learned through some research on this issue is that there are nearly 600,000 students in 57 public school districts in Maricopa County. Their needs vary greatly. They come large and small. Some have fewer than 50 students, many have tens of thousands of students. And so trying to develop a program that meets all the needs of these students is quite a task. We are working with partners to identify a strategy to deploy technology, and specifically laptops and hotspots for internet access to students and families in need. We do anticipate focusing this program on students who are already receiving free and reduced-price lunch programs. With 600,000 students throughout the county, there is a need to be very specific about who will receive the benefit. So we would like to suggest adding, in addition to the $20 million that's already in this budget, we'd like to suggest adding $5 million more, just to make sure that we can hit the target on that program.
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, Leanne, one of the things, I was thinking about this last night, by the way, one of the things perhaps we, we look at, and how do we make sure that the resources we have for school support on, on the, the access to the web, perhaps looking at maybe a two-tier type process, I don't even know how difficult this is, and this is a bad idea, just tell me, this is a bad idea, Steve, don't do it. But perhaps maybe a tier system where school districts that are 80% free and reduced, look at those schools first, because those, I think, you're going to find are going to be the most neediest. And then you break it down, go to 60%. I would venture out to say that almost all our schools are at 60%, or it doesn't matter where you're at, you're probably around somewhere in the 50% to 60% tile. But we look at the, the ones that are really at the 80%. And, you know, you have schools in Chandler, and I know out in Washington School District is a, is another one that we look at, schools that are at that 80%, because those more than likely are going to be the most neediest. And then work our way down to 60%, and then seeing who else out. That's just a thought.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gardo, I think that's, I think that's insightful. I think looking at districts versus schools will be important. I think about 60% of our schools have, are at that, about 31, 31 of the 57 districts have 60% or greater of their students in free or reduced-price lunches. And the other, I guess, issue that's been brought to our attention is what to do about the districts that are in more remote areas where internet access is even a greater challenge. So those are all of the things we'll be considering as we develop the program.
I hear you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we're, we have two programs related to homelessness response and prevention, so I'm going to ask Bruce to talk about both of these programs.
So, if I may speak first about rental assistance. So the, the $30 million that the board previously approved for rent assistance is, is going well. It was quite a staffing effort to get up to a level, but we have already approved almost $3.8 million worth of rent assistance, and another $2 million is in the queue for payment processing. So already 1,200 households have received the benefit of that. There are some unserved areas in the county that didn't have access to rental assistance money, the City of Mesa, for example, and so this proposal would expand and provide a comparable amount to the county's level of coverage for the City of Mesa. And I believe the second piece I wanted to talk about was food bank assistance. So we know the demands on food banks have been incredible. We've been talking and working with the Director of the Food Bank Association, Angie Rogers, and she's talked at early on, they were seeing so many new people who'd never been to food banks, never experienced the sudden loss of income, never had to go and ask for help with basic food for themselves and their family. So they did, they're an experienced organization, they have all the networks with the major food distribution, the St. Mary's, the United Food Bank, and they have relationships with hundreds, hundreds of smaller agencies that also distribute food, faith-based organizations, other nonprofits, groups that are affiliated with public school systems and all that. So they're an established group that's got the network, they can get this out through grant-making, they're excited about the possibility. We're all excited, because we can bring this program up in October before the holiday season starts, when they really start to see increased demand. So this is really a true need in the community, and this will be important. And then utility assistance. So in addition to our $30 million of rent assistance, when I talked to you earlier about that, our plan was to bundle services with utility assistance. Families are struggling with both, rent and utilities, and we got about just under $2 million increase of federal utility assistance money, and the plan was to integrate those, to merge those when we work with families. Well, the federal program has so many restrictions. It's got a lower income eligibility level than the county's rent assistance program has. It's a lot more complicated eligibility determination. It just takes too long to process, and we're finding it's not sufficient. We're hearing from local community action agencies all over, small and large communities, that people need help paying their utilities. And so what we would propose is adding $6 million of CARES funding to supplement that, so we can really get these monied out in the hands of the families that need them so desperately.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a quick question, Bruce. On this program, will this just be for utility bills moving forward, or will, would it also include retroactive, you know, during the period of COVID?
Mr. Gates, we intend to go back to March 1st as we had. So it would largely mirror kind of the rent assistance program that we have. In fact, this would allow 6,000 households, which was our target number for the rent assistance also, to be served. So it's a mirror program.
And with the hottest summer on record that we've had, the timing couldn't be better for this. So thank you, Bruce.
Well, and I think that a lot of people don't realize that what the utilities have done is deferred payment rather than allow people not to ever have to pay it. It's just deferred.
So the last slide in our presentation just talks about how we're proposing to pay for these new programs. If you'll recall, we included about $74 million to that category I mentioned earlier about ongoing emergency preparedness and response efforts. So we're recommending reducing this amount by $21.25 million and adding $5 million to schools. And so that's that net decrease to that first category of health and emergency response. We're also recommending that we reduce the Safe County Services and Workspaces budget by $30 million. We're just not spending at the level we expected to there. And then that will be used to partially offset the homelessness response and prevention. That's the expansion of the rental assistance program Bruce mentioned, and also the $40 million increase to the Small Business Program. And then lastly, the $10 million for supporting individuals and families. That amount was already in the budget, and we're just suggesting that the way that we spend it is $3 million for the food bank program and $6 million for the utility assistance program. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
This is, Mr. Chairman, this is, thank you, Leanne and Bruce, and all the work that you all are doing to provide services to our families in these trying times. The food insecurity issue, dealing with the food banks, I think that is just critical. And as Bruce stated, you have families for the first time that never thought they would ever have to rely on some of our food banks or having to rely. You've seen it across the country. You've seen these long lines of folks in other cities that are waiting in line for food boxes. So the food insecurity has always been a real thing in our community, but it has just been kicked up a notch because of the pandemic that we're dealing with and the fact that now you're looking at unemployment insurance being cut and people are having to take even less as they're looking for employment. These types of services such as the food pantries, the utility assistance, the rental assistance, all this stuff. And I never thought we would be in a position, never thought we'd be in a position right now that we would have to see so many families struggling right now. Where I live, it's interesting, where I live, there's a van that pulls up from the school district and there's a line of kids that are there. And they're learning from home, online, but they're getting their lunches delivered to them. So they get their lunch or their breakfast, and they go back into their home and they're studying. And so it just shows you the need out there, not only, like I said, not only just from the food insecurity, but just all around basic services and needs that families need in order to survive this pandemic. So I just want to thank Leanne and Bruce and all their teams for the work they're doing to make sure that our families are taken care of during this pandemic. The lifelines are there, and just great work. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would echo all of Supervisor Gallardo's comments. Leanne, Bruce, Joy, thank you for everything that you've done here. This is about helping people, and I think you put together a plan that really addresses what the needs are in the community. We've saw, after a while here, a huge demand from our small businesses for support. This $40 million being committed to small business is the right thing to do, and it's consistent with this board, which has been committed to our small businesses for years. And we're very fortunate, due to the support of our congressional delegation, to really make a difference for our small businesses. I mean, I hear about this all throughout the community, that they have the need and they need this assistance. You know, the fact is that our students are still, many of them, learning from home and are going to be for weeks, if not months. And so this digital divide project, I think Supervisor Gallardo, also Councilwoman Pastor from the City of Phoenix, who really has a passion for this, I think this can be a game-changer not only during COVID but into the future. And so I'm really excited about that. And again, our food banks, my district, Desert Mission, does great work. This is going to make a big difference in people's lives and finally utility assistance. So, you know, for those who are saying, "We're not doing anything with this CARES funding," you know, I tell them, "Look at what's being done here by our team." And finally, too, we're doing this while still being able to get all the funding towards the contact tracing, which is a major focus by public health, and the testing programs that we're putting in place throughout the county. So we're able to do both because we have the funding here, and this funding is being put to work. So again, thanks to everybody who had a hand in putting this plan together.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Supervisor Chukri.
I won't belabor the points made because they're very valid. Leanne has stepped up in a big way. We've got to work with Leanne for several years now, and I view this as one of her shining moments. Bruce is as steady as they come in knowing this frontwards and backwards and isn't opposed to hearing criticisms or ways we could do it better. So I think that's indicative of a great team. Of course, Joy, everyone who's involved in this has been remarkable. Mr. Gates said something that warrants repeating in a different way, and that is that we did not throw money when it first came to us at problems. We never have as a county or as a board. We look at things, we evaluate, we take criticism sometimes for doing that, but that doesn't change our resolve and our forward attitude as to how we will address problems just like this, a pandemic of all things. And that's indicative of how we've looked at this for the past several months and why we are here today, listening to this presentation and making sure that the money is going where it needs to go this far into a pandemic. So I'm grateful for my colleagues. I'm grateful for being judicious as well as looking at the data as it's presented and then gauging and making decisions from that data. So that's what's reflective in this agenda item. And with that, I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? And before we vote, I just want to add my appreciation. I know that Bruce and Leanne have had enormous challenges through all of this, and they've risen to every occasion. You know, our board has asked questions on every turn on how best we could be handling this, and your responses have been amazing. And I really too appreciate the leadership of Joy. It's made me very proud to be here. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to planning and zoning consent agenda, items five through six, Rose's states. The board will now consider the planning and zoning consent agenda.
Move approval of items five and six?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, moving on to statutory hearings, items number seven and eight. And we have item seven C that has been asked to be withdrawn. Clerk, is there anyone online or written comments on item seven or eight?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on item number eight, we have approximately 12 to 13 people who have registered in favor of the formation of this district. There is someone online who can answer any questions if needed. Otherwise, all of the comments are in favor of the district.
Okay, any questions? The board will now consider items seven A through B and eight.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion also carries. Okay, continuing under statutory hearings, Environmental Services, amend the environmental health code regulations regarding piggeries. Clerk, is there anyone online or written comments on item number nine?
None, Mr. Chairman.
The board will now consider item number nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion also carries. Okay, county officers. Board of Supervisors, reappointments to the Community Development Advisory Committee and under sheriff agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration and IGA with the City of El Mirage, accept reimbursement from the U.S. Forest Service and rescind and replace the IGA with the Department of Economic Security. The board will now consider items 10 through 14.
Move approval of items 10 through 14?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Judicial branch, adult probation, item number 15, grant from Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance. Wow, that's a lot of justice. The board will now consider item 15.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under county management, Assistant Manager, Leanne Bone, appointments and resignation of Maricopa County Workforce Development Board. The board will now consider item number 16.
Move approval. Mr. Chair, with just a brief comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the appointees to the Workforce Development Board from District Three is Marc Chavidmark, who is someone I've worked with for many years in the community, is one of the leaders in the North Mountain Business Alliance, which is one of our great small business groups within District Three. So just thrilled that she's willing to serve in this capacity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. County offices, air quality, number 17, modification to IGA with ASU, number 18, agreement with U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Under animal care and control, 19 through 20 is amend agreements with City of Buckeye and City of Tempe. And items 21 through 22, New Hope Agreements. The board will now consider items 17 through 22.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Supervisor Gates. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, under elections, item number four has, item number 24 has already been approved. So we will consider item 23, adopt resolutions for the November general election. Item number 25, appropriation adjustment for grant fund. Item number 26, revocable license agreement with Mace Rec Partnership LP. And number 27, lease agreement with AINA Holdings. The board will now consider items 23 and 25 through 27.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 23, 25, 26, and 27.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under facilities management, number 28, 1280 detention facility naming, Watkins Jail. Under finance, number 29, non-obligation letter for Foreign Trade Zone for Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation Incorporated. Number 30, funds transfer warrants. Under human resources, number 31, employee discount vendor donation, and 32, market ranges. The board will now consider items 28 through 32.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 28 through 32.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under human services, item 33, accept grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Number 34, submittal of grant application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. 35 through 37 is to amend the IGAs with Mesa Unified School District, Scottsdale Unified School District, and the City of Tolleson. Number 38 is a developer agreement with Newtown Community Development Corporation. The board will now consider items 33 through 38.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under procurement, ASO Dental Claim Administrator for Employee Self-Inured Group, PPO. 40, On-Site Clinical Medical and Specialty Health Services. Number 41, Asphalt, Emulsified Oil and Petroleum Resin. 42, Heavy Duty Truck Construction and Agriculture, Industrial Fleet, and Equipment Parts, Service, and Accessories. The board will now consider items 39 through 42.
Mr. Chair, move approval of items 39 through 42.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under public health, 43 through 44, amend IGAs with the Arizona Board of Regents and Arizona State Board of Pharmacy. 45 through 46, contracts with Neighborhood Outreach Access to Health and with Dignity Healthcare. Number 47, IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services. 48, notice of intent to contract with Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. 49, accept and use of gift cards for the Tuberculosis Control Incentive Program. 50, purchase order for IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services. 51, apply and accept grant funds from Health Service and Resources Administration. The board will now consider items 43 through 51.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 43 to 51.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under transportation, 52, amend policy regarding road bridge condition levels. 53, bill of sale for Queen Creek Domestic Water Improvement District assets. And that's been requested to continue to October 21st, 2020. 54, contract with WSP USA Inc. 55, quitclaim deed and assignment of easement for El Mirage Road. 56 through 57, annexations by the Town of Gilbert. 58, easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. Under industrial development, 59, resolution of the issuance of bonds for the benefit of Ottawa University. Okay, 53 will be continued, so the board will now consider items 52 and 54 through 59.
Move approval with a brief comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number 58, this is an important item for us up in the northern part of District Three. I want to thank the Real Estate Department in McDoat for their work on this issue. This will allow for a portion of 20th Street to be paved up there. We've had requests from residents for years on this, and it's going to make a difference in mitigating the dust, which is an issue up there. So I want to thank everyone for their work on this important item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll second the motion with one caveat, that we are pulling 53 out because I think we will need a separate motion to continue that to the 21st. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, since- Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, since it is not a public hearing, it can simply be announced that we're moving it, so we don't need a motion on that.
Perfect. Then I second without my commentary. I apologize.
It's okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Setting of hearings, planning and development. Item number 60, planning and zoning, setting of hearings. And item 61, under transportation, road file number 2948-R. The board will now consider items 60 and 61.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 16 and 61.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Under consent agenda, clerk of the board, item 62, settlement resolutions of property tax cases and claims. 63 through 69, cancellation of election and approval of appointments to the Board of Directors and Board of Trustees. Number 70, 2020 report of active special taxing districts. 71, RICO funds quarterly, quarterly report. 72, minutes. 73, duplicate warrants. 74, civil penalty appeals for approvals. 75, donations. And please note Supervisor Gates will recuse himself from item number 62.
So we just want to do number 62 first?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Sorry, I should have read that first.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gates, do you want to step out just for 62 and we can make a motion for the rest?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve all of these items unless Mr. Gates wants to vote on the remaining ones and not item 62.
Do you feel like voting?
So my motion would be to approve all items with the exception of item number 62 and with a thank you for item number 75 to the donations we received.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries. Okay, now the board will consider item 62.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. I'll second it.
Thanks, Steve, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, if we could get Supervisor Gates back. Okay, under addendum, Board of Supervisors. Number 76, CARES Act expenditure approval. And under elections, we did 77 earlier, so, and then under elections, 78 through 79, lease agreements with EC Crossroads. The second, LLC and Morris Family Trust. And number 80, appropriation adjustment for grant funding from state, Arizona, vote save. The board will now consider items 76 and 78 through 80.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Addendum continued, parks and recreation. Number 81, settlement and mutual release agreement with Trace Rios Golf LLC. Number 82, assignment of use management agreement with Trace Rios Golf LLC. And number 83, amend use management agreement with Southwest Management LLC. The board will now consider items 81 through 83.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now recess as the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors and convene as the flood control district board of supervisors. Under flood control district, we have items 84 through 88, and the board will now consider items 84 through 88.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion also carries. We will now adjourn as the flood control board of directors and convene as the library district board of directors. Under library district, the only item is number 89, minutes. The board will now consider item 89.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn as the library district board of directors and convene as the stadium board of directors. Under the stadium district, item 90, administrative correction to annual audit. The board will now consider item 90.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Chukri, a second from Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn as the stadium board of districts, stadium district board of directors and reconvene as the board of supervisors. Item number 91, public comment. Clerk, do you have anything to report regarding public comment, female responses?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we've received several public comments and they break down into two categories. We received 34 questions, comments, or concerns from people about the mask regulation, and we have received nine comments about animal care and control. They're wondering about the volunteer program and if it will be started up again. Those are the two categories that we had for comments today.
Okay. Item 92, supervisor summary of current events. Joy, do you have anything this morning?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder for everyone to get their flu shot, either through our employee side or through your own provider. It's really very important.
Thank you. And I said this morning, I think we are now afternoon. Supervisor Chukri.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to respectfully sign off, not that I don't want to hear what my colleagues have to say, but I am running late, so thank you. Great job chairing, you're hired. And for the express benefit to Mr. Hickman.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you all.
Okay, Supervisor Gallardo.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, just congratulations on chairing. I think this is your first meeting, serving as our chair, and we know next year when you're the chair to bring snacks. Because you have a five-year or five-hour meeting. Nonetheless, congratulations, good job.
Thank you. Supervisor Gates.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would agree. Great job leading us here through a very important meeting, a lot of important items. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention briefly, had the opportunity, and I know you were there as well, Mr. Sellers, to attend the latest bridge forum. And a great discussion of, of social justice and all the issues going on in our community. And it was a particular focus on sports and we had representatives of the major professional franchises there, so a wonderful discussion. And I've been invited to another one where we will be discussing mental health issues along with our presiding judge, Judge Welty and others. So these very important issues that are being discussed and, and really feel privileged to be a part of those discussions. And then also looking forward to speaking at the East Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. They'll be having their meeting on September 29th at 7:00 PM. And in the interest of the current COVID-19 situation, that will be an outdoors meeting. So it should be lovely, 7:00 PM, looking forward to that. I think there's like a presidential debate that evening, but I think it'll be far more interesting to be there with the folks in Sunny Slope and hear what, what's on their minds that evening. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I believe our county attorney may be attending that bridge forum as well.
That's right.
So it should be very, very interesting. I just, very quickly, a couple of comments. I dropped off a CARES check at the Sun Lakes Fire District yesterday, a substantial amount, and received huge appreciation from them. And in fact, they want to come here to the county in a couple of weeks and, and thank us again for, for doing that and recognizing the needs of, of that, that district that is in a unincorporated area of the county. So very much appreciated. I'll also mention just quickly that the East Valley, the East Valley Partnership Transportation Committee now has been expanded and called the Critical Infrastructure and Transportation Committee. And that was done so that we could add water resources as one of the items that we talk about and that we look after. And, you know, that's recognizing that that really is a very critical part of our future. So I'm very happy to be one of the co-chairs of that committee and happy to see that added. So with that, Fran.
Mr. Chairman, I was reminded by our attorney that I needed to let you all know that the comments that we did receive will be sent to all of your offices, so you'll be able to review them.
Very good, thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? I move this meeting be adjourned.